I'd like to call the City Council Meeting Committee of the whole for January 17th to order. At this time, as we start this meeting, our moment of silence and thinking about the opportunities and challenges that lie before us on so many different things. We've got people that are obviously struggling with this cold and the, as I've talked to a lot of people, the response that people are trying to give to those people with, that are struggling with the cold, and we can always do better. The issues that our first responders face in this really icy conditions and how they've responded as well. And our city employees, as we have kept our streets extremely clean through these times with ice and snow, how they've responded so effectively as well. So with all that, as a moment of thanks, but also a moment of silence, please. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I again would like to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport even, an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic devices as they can be interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium and wait to be identified and recognized by myself or our committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the common accepted, commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you again for being here. Is there, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have three public hearings, and the first is Public Works, and Chairman Alderman Ambrose of that, of Public Works will lead that discussion. Thank you, Your Honor. The first item is a public hearing on the proposed resolution of necessity covering the FY17 alley resurfacing program for the alleys between Leclerc and Farnham, from Garfield to Columbia, and between Schricker and Glassbell from Pine to Belmont. Anybody wishing to address this, please come forward and state your name.
Bob Grezenbeck, and I own a duplex on the corner of, it borders the alley and Columbia and Farnham. So I have a, about a $700-plus assessment to it. I use it a couple of times a month when I'm at the property. I shortcut through the alley to get back towards home, and I find it not much of a problem. There are a few potholes in there, but I've been on some streets the city has that have been worse than that alley. In an alley, you're supposed to be going relatively slow, I would assume, less than 25 miles an hour, and I think for the money that would cost the residents, plus the money that would cost the city, the city ought to spend it somewhere that the roads are much rougher shape. I think the people who complain about it being rough ought to spend the money on new shock absorbers. They could use them anywhere on the street. They don't need to use them, they don't need to worry about the bumps in the alley.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kurt Schreiner. I live at 2720 Farnham Street, along that same alley, and I actually had the documents signed by all the other property owners who align that particular alley. I understand Bob's opinion, but the remainder of the people were good enough to sign it, and they think this is important to the community and to the neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Number two is a public hearing on the plan specifications in form of contract, estimated cost of the ADA ramp program FY18. The estimated cost is $230,000. Anybody from the public?
Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
And the third public hearing is on the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Pheasant Creek tributary stream stabilization. The estimated cost is $160,000. Anybody from the public?
I move to close this public hearing, Your Honor. It has been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. We'll now move on to finance, a public hearing in finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the first public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $9.5 million in general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2018. Anyone from the public wish to speak in regards to this item? If so, please state your name, address, or ward. Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this, this public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I open the second public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $12 million in general obligation refunding bonds. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing, hearing and seeing no one, I move to close this item.
It's been moved and seconded to close that public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. That public hearing is closed. We're now going to move on to item number seven on the agenda. We have one presentation for tonight's meeting, and we have our June 30, 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Audit Review by RSM McGladrey. And I think our Assistant City Administrator and Finance Director, CFO, will come up with a representative from McGladrey.
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon Wright, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator. Yes, I'm here tonight with Heidi Hopkirk from RSM, who is the city's auditor. They've come and they performed their audit for the year. Really, before we get started with fiscal year 2019, it's important that we close out and we report on everything for fiscal year 2017. That's done here in this book, the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFER. All of you have received a copy of this CAFER, but for the thousands of people who will ask you after this presentation for a copy of it, it's available online at the city's website. They can go there and they can take a look at it. You can also find the monthly financial reports that we produce as well for the city. I do want to just thank, obviously, RSM for all of their hard work. They've been our auditor now for eight years with that, so they know the city very well. They're very accustomed to the way that we do things. We also, I also want to make sure to thank Linda Folland, our Assistant Finance Director, and Basha Gerlach, who's our accounting supervisor. The two of them, in fact, they'll just stand up real fast. They don't like this at all.
[laughter]
But if anyone deserves a round of applause, it's probably them for everything that they do. So they spend probably hundreds of hours putting together these reports for the city. They work very hard to do that. They do an excellent job, and I couldn't be happier to work with them on this project. And so we'll turn the title, turn the time over to Heidi for the report.
Thank you, Brandon. I am Heidi Hopkirk, a partner with RSM and led your audit this year. We did hand out a high-level summary presentation and a hard copy to all of you, and that's what I'll be covering. I promise I won't go through the 200-page document page by page, so we'll hit some high-level highlights. We did meet with the audit committee to go over everything in detail along with management prior to this meeting, so if you have further follow-up questions, they would also be able to answer those questions for you. So to start out, I'm going to go through some auditor communication and then go over some high-level financial information as of June 30th. As your auditors, we come out and perform audits under three sets of standards. The first set is the auditing standards, which tell you whether or not your financial statements are materially correct, and in the current year, I'm happy to report that you received an unmodified or clean opinion, so that tells you that all your statements are materially correct. We also look at your internal controls through the audit process under the government auditing standards. Through this process, we don't provide an opinion, but we would indicate any deficiencies that we see in that internal control process, and in the current year, we did not report any deficiencies nor any non-compliance related to the financial statements. Lastly, we look at your single audit, and that's where we audit your federal awards or grants, and from there, we're required to pick certain programs specified by the guidance. There's calculations, and in the current year, we looked at two programs, the airport improvement and the highway planning and construction, and through our audit of those specific programs, we did not report any compliance findings, nor did we have any deficiencies related specifically to those programs in the current year. Within the single audit or compliance report, you will note that there is a material weakness that was reported over the schedule itself. What there was, was a misidentified program that resulted in some changes to prior years that had to go back and be re-audited. Those were, those were completed and reissued with no additional findings from those prior years also, and that was an item that we discussed with management throughout the process and specifically with the audit committee too in detail. As long, as far as accounting practices, your financial statements look very similar to the prior year. There is one new footnote. It's in Note 12, if you'd like to get more information, and this is in regards to the tax abatements that you provide as the city. So there's no financial impact to your financial statements from a debit credit standpoint, but there is a disclosure to let the user know how much you did abate. This is related to property taxes and sales tax, taxes that you abate throughout the year. There are management judgments and estimates included in your financial statements. As your auditors, we look at those that are significant. We perform our own independent calculation, use third parties to verify those estimates, and through our testing, we believe that all of those were reasonable and had no concern with any of the estimates or judgments used. There was one audit adjustment in the current year that we proposed through our process. The management did agree with it, and it's reflected with the financial statements. There was a double posting of an entry for a long-term liability, so it actually reduced the expense of liability in the financial statements. There were a couple uncorrected misstatements. These are areas that either are correcting themselves in the current year or are just not material in determination by management to the financial statements, and we concurred with that conclusion. The biggest one I want to point out is, I stood up here the last couple of years talking about the pension plans and the pension liability that you record, and how those pension plans at the state level are the ones making the determination for the assumptions. The city management has no control over that, so you're at the mercy of what the plans decide to utilize, and through our review and audit process, there was an assumption that wasn't included that under the actuarial standard should be. So in the current year, it wasn't material to your financial statement, so it is shown as a past adjustment, and going forward, the plan is correcting that, so it will correct itself next year, and the liability will have all the appropriate assumptions made. In addition to that, there were some uncorrected misstatements related to prior-year revenues that were posted in the current year, so just correcting themselves through the current year. I talked about the significant issue related to the single audit that we discussed with management, but other than that, we had no disagreements with management through the process and did not have any significant issues in performing the audit. Next, I'll cover some high-level financial information. Your total revenues for your, all of your governmental funds did increase about $7 million in the current year. The largest increase was related to your intergovernmental. This is where your state and federal grants are recorded, and it does depend, this does fluctuate from year to year because it depends on timing and the types of grants. Your increase this year of 4.9 million was mainly related to the highway planning and construction revenues that you received compared to the prior year as a, as a result of projects that you had going on from year to year. You also saw about a $1 million decrease in fines and forfeitures related to the speed cameras, and in addition, your property taxes and overall taxes did increase about 2.7 million from the prior year. Looking at the expenditures for those same governmental funds, those saw an increase of about $10.6 million in total. The largest increase is related to your debt service payments. In the accounting world, when you do some refunding of bonds, sometimes those bonds can't be paid off until the future year, so this year, you had four, five issues that were actually able to be called and paid off. You had money sitting in an escrow account, so the cash was already sitting there from previous issues. You just had to wait for that moment in time that those could be paid off, so all of that flows through your debt service expense in the current year, so that's why there's a bit of an unusual expense amount in the current year, and that accounted for the majority of your increase. You did also see a decrease in your capital outlay, which is those capital projects that you have from year to year that do fluctuate. The next thing is looking at your enterprise funds. We look at those in totals and comparing the prior year to the current year, very comparable when it comes to revenues and expenditures and those non-operating. Last year, you had an increase of capital contributions compared to the current year. You had about 20 million in the prior year compared to 4 million in the current year. If you remember last year, your transload facility was constructed, so again, an accounting issue, the government side constructed that facility and then gave it to the enterprise funds, so that was accounted for in those contributions, so that's what that large amount from the prior year was related to. And then the next thing is we show a chart of just your general fund, the fund balance and the makeup, so that's your equity, and you can see the largest portion is 51% is unassigned, which means it can be used for anything, so 50% of that fund balance in the general fund is not restricted or assigned for specific purposes. The restrictions are restricted by third parties and have to be used for those purposes, while the assignments are done through the council or through management, through the budget, and those can be adjusted, but the majority of 51% is allowed to be used for anything. That's all I had tonight for a formal presentation. I would also like to thank Brandon and Linda and everyone throughout the city that helps us through the audit process. We are disruptive. We ask a lot of questions, so we take a lot of time out of their day, and we appreciate all that they do and the help that they provide us, so we are able to complete the audit and provide you this information. And I would open it up for any questions on anything I covered or didn't cover tonight.
I would just make a comment first. As my third, third year now going through this process, being part of the audit committee in my role, I'm going to give a moment. I know Alderman Tompkins, as the chair, has led the process, but we've seen steady improvement from a city operational standpoint. Thank you for your professionalism as well. You do a great job. And again, we like somebody looking close to the numbers, and you do, and we appreciate that, but more importantly, thanks to great feedback we, we get from you and others, how great our staff are and how effective that whole team does. So thank you with that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chair of Finance, Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just also wanted to say thank you so much for the thorough work that you do, and any suggestions that you make, we do appreciate that, and certainly, thank you to staff. I know this is a lot of work. Appreciate all of your extra hours and, and extra work on this, so thank you, and I hope you guys have some time off coming up soon. Thanks.
Also, I just want to thank Alderman McGinnis. She's also on that committee. I was at that meeting when we reviewed these in detail with you, the whole, the whole booklet, and so it was great to have an opportunity to do that as well, so thank you both. With that, we'll move on. Are there any petitions or communications from the council or myself? And we're going to start, Alderman Dickman, do you have anything under community engagement?
Nothing under community engagement, but I did want to mention that the ward meeting I was supposed to have January 11th had to be canceled due to weather, so that will, that topic will now be getting bumped to February 8th. The Putnam will be hopefully not getting any snowed out or anything like that this time around. This time, it will be at Truman School, though, so hope to see everyone then.
Thank you. Alderman Dickman, Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I have my first ward meeting for 2018. It will be held on Monday, January 29th at 6:30 at KSI, and the speaker is Danielle Mahaland with the, she's the project manager for the Iowa DOT, and in case anybody's heard, there's a small project going on with I-74 Bridge, so she's going to present on that and provide some updates and answer questions, so thanks.
Thank you very much. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of upcoming meetings, next two Mondays, both at the Eastern Avenue Library, from 6:00 until 7:30. On the 22nd, we'll be meeting to talk about the Elmore Corners Concept Overlay and Community and Economic Development Director Bruce Berger will be there to present that. Lot of, an opportunity for public input conversation, if you like, about what's going on out there in that area. The second meeting is on the 29th, again, from 6:00 to 7:30, and that meeting is going to be our first ward meeting of the year, and the topic of discussion will be primarily Costco, some of the things that have happened since the last discussion on Costco. There are some ongoing developments that people need to be aware of, and this is just, again, an opportunity to keep people apprised of what's going on in the neighborhood, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you. I just wanted to let FYI to everyone that I actually run ward meetings on an annual basis, so we finally got confirmation for the last speakers last week, and there will be a full list for the rest of the year, a ward meeting every month, and all the guest speakers for 2018 were chosen by the residents, not me, this year. So we have guest speakers such as Kyle Carter from the Downtown Davenport Partnership, and also a representative from Palmer, who will be discussing the PID. So we have some very interesting guest speakers from Fifth Ward, and my meetings are open to anyone across the city if you want to come and listen to the guest speaker and ask questions. So that list will be posted in social media. I will have copies available with me here every Wednesday if you'd like to pick one up, and of course, it'll be on my website as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and just want to make one announcement that this afternoon, I received a request. As, as many of you know, I'm, was elected as co-chair of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, and we've been requested to come to the White House next Wednesday with a number of other mayors talking about infrastructure and potential investments along the Mississippi River. So we'll be meeting with some of the key staff relating to the infrastructure and potentially the amount of money that will be available in matching some of those funds that we've been putting together as all the Mississippi River mayors. So we'll keep you apprised of that, and more information will follow. Like I said, I just found out a few hours ago, so we'll be keeping you apprised, but I know we'll be in good hands with Alderman Mattson leading the meeting next week. We're going to move on to our action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed will be community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion, and Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open this meeting for community development this evening. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one is a third consideration, ordinance for case number ROW 17-06, being the request of the City of Davenport for the right-of-way vacation abandonment of 10,800 square feet, more or less, of public right-of-way south of the West Terminus of Dugan Court and north of the West Terminus of the right-of-way south of Dugan Court. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing application to the Iowa Department of Transportation's RISE program for grant assistance for reconstruction of Sloper Town Road between Division and Harrison Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. If staff could just briefly sort of cover what this is about, it's an interesting cooperative opportunity, and it might be interesting for people to hear a bit about. Thank you.
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. This is a partnership with the City of Eldridge, so this is the portion of Sloper Town that's directly north of the airport, and it's seen a lot of traffic in recent years, even, even more, even more recently, and Eldridge jurisdiction comes down to the center line, and ours comes to the center line from the south. So we approach the State Department of Transportation. They have a RISE grant application. We've been successful with some projects in the past. This would be one where the split would be, I think, a 60-40, and so we would, the two cities would share the 40% split, and so a $1.7 million project ends up, if we're successful, costing roughly $350,000 to the city.
Thank you, Bruce, and is there any other comments from the council?
So I would just reiterate that this is a great opportunity. We've had a lot of development in the industrial park out there. We've been able to both retain, retain and attract jobs through craft and stairlight. We've seen a lot of traffic, and building and replacing roads is expensive. We're going to get roughly a $2 million road for $350,000 from the city, so hopefully, we're successful in getting the state money. Seeing no one else, I would pass it over to Alderman Clul to set the agenda.
I move that items one and two, under the community development program, be moved forward to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor, we will hand it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Clul. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you. We have several items on the public safety agenda this evening. The first one is a first consideration, ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Speed Limits by adding Division Street from 76th Street to the north end of the Interstate 80 Bridge as a 35 mile per hour street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. The next one, there's several, I'll read all of these and then ask for commentary after. Resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. The first item is John Parker Chili Chase Run, Sunday, February 18th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Closure location is Duck Creek Road to East Pleasant to Forest Road to George Washington Boulevard to Jersey Ridge Road to Bike Path returning to Duck Creek Park. Second item is St. Patrick's Society, St. Patrick's Day Grand Parade, Saturday, March 17th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Closure location, Centennial Bridge and Gaines Street to Third Street and Third Street East to Pershing Street. And the final item in this section, KSI, St. Patrick's Day Race, Saturdays, the 17th, 7:30 a.m. to noon. Closure location, 7:30 a.m. to noon. Second Street from Main to Brady, only for pre- and post-race activities. 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., race course, Second Street East of the drive up to US Bank, East to Brady, north to Third Street, then west to Division, and return to Brady Street South to Second Street to the finish line. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? And I see Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a note to chief, as I do each year, just ask that the crowd, as we come off to Centennial Bridge, your folks do a pretty good job, but it gets tight, so just to emphasize that again of, of crowd control. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Anyone else from council? Okay. The last, the next section, motion approving noise variances, requests for various events on the listed dates. The first one is Dam View Inn, 410 East Second Street, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, Saturday, March 17th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. I do want to make some, a minimum level of commentary on this one. This item I do want to move to discussion because I've spoken with the owner today, and we have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday before council to make probably some modifications to the request, so some of this may change as of the next council meeting. The next item, Front Street Tap Room, 421 West River Drive, Kelly, St. Patrick's Day at Front Street, Friday, March 16th, 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on either one of those two items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those will move on. Item number four, we have a motion approving the petition for a street light in front of 727 Westerfield Road. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on that item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that will move on. And then we have annual license renewals. I won't read through those, but they're in your packet with apparently no spacing this time for you to look through on your own with some difficulty, so those are there, and with that, I will ask Alderman Condon to set an agenda.
I move to put Dam View Inn's request under discussion item number three on the discussion agenda, and I move to put all other items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign, and that concludes public safety.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen and Alderman Condon. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that as that chair, and Alderman and Alderman Ambrose will lead that as that chair, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. I opened the discussion with the first item being a resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2018 Civic Asset Assess ADA Ramp Improvement Program. The estimated cost is $230,000. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number two is a resolution accepting the riverfront infrastructure demolition project completed by Hawkeye Pavement Corporation of Bettendorf. The project was completed with a final contract amount of $92,257. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number three is a resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Pheasant Creek Tributary Stream Stabilization Program. The amount is $160,000. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number four, staff requested this be deleted, so I'll make a motion to delete. Do I have a second? All in favor? Oppose? Number five is a resolution acceptance for Phase 1 of the FY18 Sewer Lining Program. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number six is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number seven is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. And number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of replacing sidewalks at various lots and tracks of real estate. And the last, number nine, is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracks of real estate. Anybody wishing to discuss these items? Counsel? And number 10, the last item, is a motion approving funding for the top-end overhaul of engine number two at the water pollution control plant by Altafer, in the amount of $95,000. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
Thank you. With item number four being deleted, I move the rest remaining items to consent, please.
All in favor? Oppose? Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion, and Alderman McGinnis will set the agenda.
Thank you. Start with number one, which is a resolution making provisions for the issuance of not to exceed $9.5 million in general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2018. Anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number two is a resolution making provisions for the issuance of not to exceed $12 million general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2018. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. And number three is a motion aborting the purchase of a chipper truck with cab, body, and corner LED strobe lights for the Forestry Division to Deere Brothers of Iowa City, Iowa, in the amount of $65,388 with trade. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Alderman McGinnis, will you please set the agenda?
Make a motion to move these three items to the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. There's also a list of purchases, just for informational purposes only, and that is the end of finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman McGinnis. Our list is, do we have any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Seeing none, are there any public with business this evening?
Al McWilliams, Fifth Ward, I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm still selling Quad Cilly Mallard tickets for the special, for the Special Books fundraiser. The cutoff date for that would be February 13 is the date that I would have to have the money and buy. And then I also wanted to thank JJ and Rita Rossen for passing for the KSI St. Patrick's Day race. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, are there any reports of, are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.